I'd like to call to order the April 11th, 2023 meeting of the Columbia Heights Board of Education, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance if you are able to stand and join us.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mary, will you please do the roll call?
Mueller.
Here.
Palmer.
Here.
Granland, here.
Cool.
Here.
Maderas.
Here.
Patway.
Here.
Superintendent Stenbeck.
Here.
Great, thank you. Our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. We are excited tonight to start our meeting with our Highlander highlights. We have the pleasure of welcoming our art and writing students. Eleven Columbia Heights High School art and writing students earned a total of two Gold Key, eight Honorable Mention, and eight Honorable Mention Awards at the 2023 Minnesota Scholastic Arts Awards, a competition organized by Art Educators of Minnesota. Writing student earned a Silver Key Award. We have a couple of teachers who are here to join us, so Ms. Honeywell, if you want to come up. And I believe Mr. Polly is on Zoom as well. You want to share with us about the students and their achievements?
Sure. This Scholastic Arts Award is an annual event in which students have to just really express something individual. It can't be really made from an overall project. It has to be sort of from their own ideas. And the other teachers and I capture and encourage certain students to further their work and create great submissions, which is kind of a complicated process. There's a lot of responsibility that goes in to the submissions, finishing the things on time, getting them submitted. And these students that you're seeing here all were able to make that happen, and the writing process is similar. They also are a wide-reaching, you know, some of them are freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors. There's lots of different ages, and it's competitive. There's a lot of other students around the state that compete, and our students got recognized, and we're very proud of them.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Polly, would you like to share anything about our writing student?
Sure, yeah. Just always encourage my journalism students at the Heights Herald and beyond to apply. And this year, I didn't put as much of a push out since we had a little surprise in December at home, but we got submissions from a few different students. And Greta Wilson, co-editor-in-chief of the Heights Herald, got a Silver Key for a piece she wrote for the newspaper and then resubmitted for Scholastic Art and Writing under the opinion category. A great piece about the underrated nature of coming in second. And it's really great to be involved, and I appreciate Ms. Honeywell's help in collaborating and making sure that that process goes smoothly. And I look forward to getting a wider pool of applicants next year.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Polly, and thank you, Ms. Honeywell. First, I'll say congratulations to our students. We have several of them in the room here, so in just a moment, we're going to be calling you up for some certificates. But also, so congratulations to you and excellent work, and thank you to our teachers who take the time out of their day to encourage and support our students in this endeavor. So, thank you all, and congratulations to our students.
I just want to say also thank you to everyone that witnesses the work and reads what the students are doing. It's a huge part of the process, is you can make art, but people also have to look at it. And you can write something, but people also have to read it. So it's, thanks for doing your side of the equation. We thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you. Would any of the board members like to share anything with our students?
Just echo congratulations to all of you. It's fantastic work, and we are also so proud of everything you've accomplished. So, thank you for being here, and thank you for sharing your creations with us.
I think I would also echo that and then also add, I know a lot of times we say, you know, our hearts are in the arts. And that absolutely comes through, or comes through when we look at all of the fantastic work that is presented. And, you know, thank you all so much for putting yourselves out there, either via art or writing. And, you know, I hope you are also proud of the work that you did because it's stunning. Every year, I'm blown away, and I think, oh, it can't get better, and it continues to. So, thank you all so much for everything.
Laura?
Oh, I always try to figure out how to put this into words, just how much I do appreciate how expressive all of our students are. The, you're really putting yourself into every piece that you create. You know, it's giving us an insight into who you are and how you feel, and that there's such a huge amount of gratitude for being able to share that part of you. And it's just, it's stunning work, and you can really tell, you can really tell how deeply you feel about expressing yourself. And like I said, it's hard, it's hard to put it into words, but I so appreciate everything that you do.
Right. Any more? Michelle?
I'm sorry, but to second that, kind of add on to it, like, we don't really get to spend a lot of time with you guys, so it kind of helps us to get to know you, and it's amazing. I mean, I'm kind of artsy, and I just love seeing all of this. It's just, I don't know, I love taking it in and just seeing your perspective on the world, your perspective on yourselves, the people around you, and the world that you have created because you're creating this world, like, this is yours, you know? And so it's kind of amazing to see the tone that you're setting for your environment. So, yeah, I think it's great, so congratulations.
Yes, Julie.
And I would just like to thank the instructors as well, just covering all the different medium that we see here, that the students can expand and understand, different types of art and different where they can express the most. And it obviously shows that everyone's been choosing different mediums and different settings, and it's just beautiful work, and we're so proud to be the board of such a wonderful art program. Thank you.
Great, yep, thank you. Congratulations. One round of applause. So, I have certificates for all of you that are here and some that are not. So, I'm going to come up here, I'm going to call your name and say which type of award you received. Director Stunkel is going to take our picture, and then the board members are going to be back here, ready to shake your hands. So, we'll do that first. We have Matthew Bermio, Honorable Mention. Matthew here. Martha Cole Avila with Honorable Mention. Yoslin Diaz Santos, Honorable Mention. Two honorable mentions for her, actually. Sabayf Idris, Honorable Mention. Maya Jackson, Honorable Mention. Natalie Molina, Honorable Mention. Hannah Severson, Honorable Mention. Danielle Dixon. She also received a Gold Key Award. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
May Skaya, also a Gold Key. And is it over yet? It's too much. Congratulations. And one more round of applause for our winners. And students, Director Stunkel would like to take a picture of the group. that, right? But let's start off with the approval of the agenda. I get a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Laura, and is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jessica. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Motion carries. Next are announcements. On April 18th, Tuesday at 5:30 PM is a school board work session here in the community room. Also, April 18th, Tuesday, following the work session is the School Board Subcommittee on Community Engagement. On April 25th at 5:45 PM is a School Board Community Engagement Zoom Session. On April 25th at 7:00 PM is the regular School Board Meeting in the community room, and May 9th at 7:00 PM is the regular School Board Meeting in the community room. Also, not on here, on May 9th, there is a Subcommittee on Policy at 5:00 PM. Next, we will do our citizens and employee representatives. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks and ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Time is limited to three minutes per speaker. Do you have one card from Elizabeth? Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes the personnel report from April 11th, the school board minutes from the March 14th meeting, the March 21st work session, and the March 28th meeting, and the March 7th joint meeting with the city, as well as the policy second reading for 414 mandatory mandated reporting of child neglect, physical or sexual abuse, 414 form, and 529 staff notification of violent behaviors by students. Can I get approval or motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Julie, and is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Motion carries. Next, we'll move on to reports from members of the board. The, we'll start with, I don't know who I started with last time. We'll start with Michelle, because you're looking happy over there.
So note to self, don't look happy.
Don't look happy, okay. I'm fine with it now. I've conquered being called first. I'm good. No, I don't have too much. I have completed Phase Three of my training for the board this past couple weeks, so that was cool. It was divided into two parts, so it was nice, very insightful, and I learned a lot. And I attended Fine Arts Night at North Park when they had it, and it was, it was amazing just like this was. I'm in, I'm in love with creating and just seeing people in their element, doing what they love to do. So, watching someone admire their work and other people admiring it. So, all the kiddos were just enjoying this first time, being able to actually enjoy a Fine Arts Night at North Park after a while of not being able to have it. So, it was fun watching them dance around and have fun and be with their friends after school hours. So, yeah, it was a pretty cool experience, but, yeah, that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Julie?
I attended the policy meeting before this meeting, and I have set up a meeting with Superintendent Stenbeck to talk about the finances, went through, currently have gone through the December 2022 financial reports and hope to have some answers to questions. That's what I've done this week.
Great, thank you. Laura?
I don't have much of a report this evening. Pretty much, I attended the chair meeting prior to this.
Thank you. Jessica?
Sure, my media, or my report this meeting is also pretty brief. I did spend some time reviewing summaries of the education omnibus bills in preparation for conference committees coming up at the end of April. I did reach out a bit to a former board member to try to figure out more history on the prior primary election resolution that we'll discuss a little bit later. I had conversations with Chair Mueller, Member Granland, and then I also did participate. Mindot is, has an online survey out about their different plans that they could propose for Central and University, and so I would definitely encourage folks to take a look at the proposals that are out there, particularly for Central Avenue, as it does impact pedestrian traffic and the safety of our students coming and going to all of our schools on 49th. That's available and out there for anyone to fill out. So, you know, share your opinion of that as board members and as members of the public here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
Yep, I attended the policy meeting right before this one. I also spoke with Chair Mueller and Member Maderas, spoke with some families, students, and staff regarding a number of different concerns, also spoke with Councilmember Biskins and Councilmember Spriggs.
Great, thank you. And for my reports, I attended the Subcommittee on Policy as well as the chair meeting just prior to this and had conversations with Member Maderas, Member Granland, and Superintendent Stenbeck. Superintendent Stenbeck, we have a report and correspondence.
Yeah, briefly, so the school district was on spring break last week and returned Monday for grading and professional development, and I was invited to present at Valley View to the staff there, so that was really fun to spend a morning down at Valley View. I am happy to be working with our student school board representatives, and they'll be speaking in a little bit about an upcoming statewide, region-wide student school board networking session. So, it's very exciting. I'm looking forward to hearing more about that from them, and I messaged a couple of times at least each of the board members. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to our Northeast Metro 916 presentation, so I would like to welcome 916 Superintendent Val Ravo and Scott Thomas, Director of Educational Services. Welcome.
Thank you.
Both mics should be live there for you.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me see if I can. Well, thank you so much for the invitation to be here this evening. Really appreciate the opportunity to share our programming and services and our partnership with Columbia Heights, and Scott and I will be giving some overviews of our programming and services. I'll start with a little bit about just what intermediate districts are. So, there are four intermediate school districts in the metro. There's 287, 288, 917, and then 916. Collectively, we provide services to over 20,000 students across the metro. The programming and services are unique to each intermediate district based on the needs that are coming from our member districts. And so 916 is 13 members, the largest of the four intermediates. And one of the main features of intermediate school districts is that we do provide an array of specialized services at a cost that is beneficial to our members. So, 916 has been in existence for 54 years. I looked back to see when Columbia Heights joined as a member, and that was in 2001, so you've been with us for about 22 years. You can see in the middle is the map of all of our member districts. The districts that are in blue are the districts that were the founding member districts of intermediate district 916. So, last year, last spring, about this time, we started looking at, I'm going to address the serving the top 3%, we started looking at, who do we serve? Who are our students? We did a trend analysis, and it was my understanding and sort of a collective understanding that we were serving the top 1% of students across our member districts. Through the data collection and the information that we gathered through the student, the child count numbers or the December 1st numbers that come out every year, we actually serve the top 3% of students across our member districts. In special education, we serve students in a number of ways, primarily in four ways and are setting four programs contracted to our member districts, so contracted services, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a few slides. And then in our care and treatment programs, we have residential treatment program for young ladies or women or children who identify as female at the Willows. And then we also have a care and treatment program called ARIS. And so we also have alternative learning centers, which Dr. Thomas is going to talk about in a few slides. Some of the unique services that we provide at 916 is Project Return, which is an alternative to suspension and expulsion. And then we have intervention or consultation team services, which I know Columbia Heights is really benefited from in terms of, and taken advantage of, and I have some additional information in a few slides on your interaction with our consultation team. So, our contracted services is one of the really great ways that member districts can take advantage of services that we provide. So, we will hire low-incidence teachers, and then member districts can purchase a portion of FTEs. So, if you only need a .2 BVI teacher, the other .8 of that BVI teacher is sold to another member district. And so, we're able to help you keep your costs down so you don't have to hire a full-time BVI teacher, for instance, or teacher of the blind and visually impaired. And I have your data for Columbia Heights in a separate slide. But that is an example, and this slide is our contracted services from our most recent annual report. And you can see the red circled, red circled areas, 83.38 FTEs is what we contract out to our member districts, and last year, we provided services in our member districts about 400, a little over 400 students receive the services in their home schools by contracted service providers that we hire and share with you. And then students, and that was 495 students, actually. It's on the bottom of the slide there, so. And you can see the numbers of BVI or blind visually impaired students was 203, and deaf hard of hearing students was 292, and those are real low-incidence disabilities, and so it's harder for a district to contract or find a BVI or DH teacher. And so, we're happy to have a whole cadre of special education teachers in those low-incidence Some of the other things that we do beyond our student-facing services is professional services, and this is just a sampling of the professional services that we provide to our member districts. We do a lot of staff development, we partner with member districts and outside agencies to provide training, not only to our staff, but to our member district staff. Last summer, we did C-Bits and Bounce Backs mental health training for any member district staff that were interested. We also have a proactive measures training that is, happens in the summer, and that's available to all of our member districts. And then, of course, crisis management. We have SRP, SRM training coming up here next week, and so we're bringing in a group out of Denver and offering that to all member districts. And that's just a highlight of some of the staff development. We also have district collaborations like Laserfish. I know Columbia Heights takes advantage of our Laserfish services, and when I talked to our Director of Technology, he said that currently that's costing Columbia Heights around 3,000, and without that collaborative or part of the consortium, it'd be a little over 24,000. So, it's really a cost savings to be a part of, and that's just one example. We also have Infinity Systems, which I know you've also taken advantage of, and we pay 8,000 for every survey that you take with Infinity Systems, and that's Equometrics and Orgometrics. So, just a couple of highlights from our professional services. So, this is also information from our annual report. Last year, we served almost 5,000 students across the district, and the number-one area of service that we provide in our educational centers is our area learning centers, a little over 2,000 students. Career and Tech is the next highest area of service that we provide for students, and that's a little over, well, almost 900, and then in special education, followed by care and treatment, and then again, those 495 students that we served in our home, in our home districts or member districts. And you can see in the map, kind of the orange dots are where our programs are, and so the programs on the right, those 18 programs are spread throughout, kind of the central part of our, of our geography, is intermediate district 916. So, as part of that trend analysis that we did last spring, we wanted to look at information that we had as far back as we could go with, with when we started collecting data on our services, because we feel it's really important to be able to predict, not only predict the future, but look at what our trends are in the needs for our member districts. So, some things became very clear to us that were trends. For instance, the special education, we not only see that we're serving 3% of the students across our member districts, so that's 95,000 some students across our 13 members, we're serving 3% of those students in, at 916, and that is increasing by 3% every year. So, that's a trend that we're watching, and we're watching very closely. And then our contracted services, another high-usage area for our member districts, again, really decreasing the amount of funds that are, would be encumbered by a member district to hire a full-time, low-incidence special education teacher. And that was, that's been increasing since 2011. It's increased 83% in the number of services that we contract out to our member districts. One of the fun points was that we have provided educational services to 25, over 2,500 students in our care and treatment programs. We're seeing a clear trend back up in Career and Tech to where it was back in 2010, 11, and we doubled our graduation rates in our area learning centers from 2018, 19 to the 21, 22 school year. Some high-level trends, and we, we have, I'll mention also that we have five advisories that help us to kind of look at this data, look at this information, give us feedback on our programming, our services, what the challenges are, any concerns, and then we meet as advisories to talk about what are the things that we might think about as concerns moving forward, or areas that we're really doing well as a consortium, or things that we might want to think about that are really innovative and creative in terms of how we might provide services in the future to students. So, this is our current enrollment, and I just, this is big picture for 916, and I just wanted to share with you kind of like where we were last year at this time and where we currently are with students enrolled. And so, as a district, we are serving a little over 1,900 students. Last year at this time was about 18, a little over 1,800. And that, the breakdown of that is primarily students in our Career and Tech, followed by our students in our ALCs, and then close, close after, our special education or setting four programs. Now, when we look at Columbia Heights, this is a snapshot, so what we're able to do now with our data team is take a look at each district's snapshot. We can take a look at how are you using our services, and we can provide this information to our member districts so they get a better idea of where their percentage of usage is based on their overall district participation. And what's really been fascinating about this data is that every member district uses 916 services differently. Some of it has to do with the size of the district, some of it has to do with closeness of some of our programming. For instance, Forest Lake will, is not a high use, does not have high usage of Career and Tech because they're a long ways away from Career and Tech, but they have higher usage in other areas. So, it's really given us a broad perspective of the 13-member districts and how unique they all are, but also gives you an idea. unique they all are, but also gives you an idea of where you're using services, educational services at nine sixteen. This doesn't include our ALCs, but special education, career and tech itinerant services, and then some of those unique programming opportunities like assessment center, project return, and consultation team. So as part of nine sixteen, as part of the consortium, and this is again, based on December first student count numbers, you make up three percent of the entire member district, thirteen member districts of that entire ninety-five thousand. And so that's three percent of the consortium. So gives you some perspective, and you're taking really great advantage and opportunity of your partnership with us, and so we're really grateful for your partnership. So here's some snapshots. Our superintendents and board members have access to a dashboard. We created a dashboard, I guess it's been about a year and a half now in November, and so in that dashboard, they can see daily, it updates every night, information about current enrollment, your itinerant services, and we added just recently consultation team requests and students transitioning back to their home schools. We'll be adding here with, before the end of the school, your professional services, so that every member district can see what are the professional services that they are also taking advantage of. Are you involved in the LaserFISH consortium? Are you taking advantage of our cybersecurity hours that we have available? So every member district has ten hours of cybersecurity consultation that we provide. So those are, you know, and you might not know about all those things unless we put it in one place where you can see it. So we're, we've been working with our data, a data team and our business analyst and cabinet to kind of create a list of all the, all of the, the menu of options, if you will, of all the things we provide. So consultation team, I know it's kind of small there, but you can see that you have really been able to take great advantage of our consultation team services. There have been seven completed consultation team requests. There's currently one in progress, and three didn't, three of those requests didn't need support any longer. So it really gives you a snapshot of like, how are you engaging with the consultation team as a district? And of course, the impressive itinerant services that you have there, a list of the points, point-four BVI, a coda, you've got a point-six DHH teacher, just a really great opportunity for you to engage in purchasing a point, a part of an FTE. And here is how your enrollment shakes out in terms of percentage. So sixty-seven percent of your students attend our ALCs, twenty-six percent are enrolled in one of our setting for special education programs, and then seven percent are at our career and tech. And I will turn it over to Dr. Scott Thomas.
Thank you. So as you saw, the bulk of our students that come from Columbia Heights attend Metro Heights Academy, which is one of our three ALCs, and I know some of you have been there fairly recently, so thank you for visiting. And so you see the number here, seventy-seven of our two hundred and thirty-six students enrolled at Metro Heights come from Columbia Heights. Last, in the summer of two thousand and twenty-one, we served a hundred and twenty-three students, and then twenty-two, a hundred and thirty-two students. So we do do your summer programming, your summer school for high school students. And last year, ninety percent enrolled earned credit with an average of one point six seven credits earned during your summer school. And overall, two hundred and sixteen between the summer day and night school. We also provide your night school credit recovery, and that is twenty-one percent of the overall Metro Heights enrollment. Thinking about our renewal and redesign, when I joined Northeast Metro three years ago, we were in a state, you know, we were going through COVID, and as we were coming out of COVID, we knew we had to respond and support our students in really different ways, and that has allowed us to really conduct a full-scale transformation of our schools. And at our ALCs, we have now added a number of different supports that really wrap around the students, including a social worker, full-time therapist on staff, as well as increased staffing. And so last year, actually this year, we did a leadership reorganization where now Metro Heights has its own dedicated principal, whereas before we had one principal for three ALCs. Metro Heights still has its own, and that allows us to have a deeper and more committed partnership, closer relationships, and so our principal at Metro Heights, Crystal Tucker, works closely with the administration here in Columbia Heights and at the high school. We've done a full review and revamp of our curriculum and instructional approach, which we're implementing over time here. So there's a phased approach where we're moving away from our previous model, which is really self-directed on a computer, doing lessons that we have developed that meet the standards, they're all standards-based, to providing more of a mix and interactive lessons and offering some rigorous and advanced courses. We also have students now taking for the first time early middle college classes at a number of different community colleges. And so we're really excited to see twenty-six students at Metro Heights taking college classes, and that's something that's never happened before, and we're really quite excited about that. It really shifts the level of opportunity our students have. And then, of course, you know, we're implementing an MTSS framework, which I'm sure you're familiar with, thinking about how we intervene and support students in a multitude of ways. So we're really in this process of a metamorphosis that's pretty exciting. I had a chance when I was at Metro Heights last week to meet a student from Columbia Heights named New, and she said I could share her name and her story. And she left Columbia Heights High School when she was seventeen. She's currently twenty-one. She has a three-year-old. And she left when she was pregnant and has been working her way through, and I asked, asked her, I said, what got you through this? Because you've been here a while. And she says, it's because of the staff that I keep coming back, and, you know, she's had some fits and starts, but now at twenty-one years old, she's a mom, and she's got a high school diploma and is so proud. And the school just rallied and erupted in applause when they rang the bell in celebration when we have a graduate. And it's just an exciting thing to see, and our graduations are always a special time to hear from our students and to hear some of the struggles and challenges that they've gone through to get to that finish line and to see their plans going forward. So thank you for your partnership. Go to that last slide there.
Yeah, thank you. And this is just an opportunity for us to say thank you. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to serve you and the students that are referred to our services and that enroll in our programs. We hope that we will be able to do as much for you and your students as we have presently into the future. So thank you, and thank you for the invitation to be here today, and thank you for sharing Laura Palmer with us once a month.
Great, thank you. If you, it's okay, we'll ask the board if they have any questions. Does anybody have any questions for our nine sixteen team?
Oh. Michelle?
I mean, I'm new on the board, I don't know too, too much about the nine sixteen and schools. So is it an alternative school? Or is it?
So we have a number, we have different schools. Our ALC, Metro Heights, is, is an alternative high school. And so students meet one of eight state criteria at risk factors, whether it could be just behind in credits, too highly mobile, there's a number of criteria, and it is a school of choice. Our special education programs, those are referred, and so students have to meet a level of need in order to be referred to these, to the special education programs.
And career and tech?
And career and tech isn't opted.
With different programs?
Twenty-two different certification areas.
Thank you. Thank you. Other questions? Jessica?
Well, first, just a comment. You know, I appreciated having the presentation in advance to look at. It's a much different level of information to have you here. It's a much deeper level of learning about everything that nine sixteen offers, so I really appreciate you taking the time and being here to kind of walk us through everything that nine sixteen has. So thank you very much for that. I know you had mentioned a little bit about some of the, the services or resources that have been invested in as, as you've experienced COVID at Metro Heights specifically. I'm wondering if, when you look at the services being requested by member districts, if you're seeing similar types of, like a shift in requests? So for example, are you seeing more requests for that mental health training? Are you seeing more requests for that collaborative intervention? Those types of services that are really meeting maybe greater, greater needs of students coming, coming back from COVID than maybe you had in the past?
So with our setting for programs, so the consultation team really responds to requests from our member districts to help with whatever the needs are, whether it's a student need or a program need, and they work collaboratively with, in partnership with the member district to figure out what are the specific needs, and we have a team of experts that will respond. And the experts are based on whatever the need is coming from the member district. So it's been a range of things, and a lot of mental health, a lot of requests for mental health that started during COVID. And so we have a really robust mental health team. We've actually started, we actually started partnering with Care Solus this year to help us because of the high level of need from not only your students and families, but our own staff. And so Care Solus is able to help our staff and our families navigate the mental health system. They help them find a partner, somebody that they will meet, that will meet their needs, somebody that will help them figure out the insurance and what connections they need to make theirs. It's really a navigator of all the needs that they might have, and it's anonymous. The district just partners with Care Solus, and Care Solus takes it from there. So that's been a really great partnership that we developed and just started, rolled out just now in January, because the need was so great for mental health, not just, you know, within our own district, but in our members, and we wanted to be able to make sure that we weren't spread too thin to be able to support our member districts. We, we saw at least, based on the dashboard information that we were getting from Care Solus, at least seventy of our staff had taken advantage of that service, and eighty of our students. So it's outside of what we provide in the school setting.
We have seen an increase in our enrollment in our ALCs, a significant increase, to the point where we had to close enrollment and develop a waiting list. We actually saw that as a common thread amongst many of the area alternative learning centers in the metro area, because so many students are still behind, and districts have been doing a lot of different things to help get students caught up, have different interventions. But it's, it's, we're, we're seeing that wave absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, I hope we answered your question.
Absolutely.
Mary? I have a quick question as well. I know you talked about setting for, and I think we've had an overview of it. I have a lot more familiarity with it because of my job, but could you briefly just talk about that federal designation and how that works?
Yeah, absolutely. So I started with the district eighteen years ago as an EBD teacher, and then was the program principal for a number of years, and then went, was in district offices, director of special education, and so special ed is my area of love and great connection to, to all things. But setting for, so when a student, so setting for is a separate placement. So setting one, two, and three, students receive services within their school district. Sometimes member districts have a setting for programming that they have available to them. So when students reach a level of need, and that's where nine sixteen comes in, where it's really expensive to bring in specialists or create a special classroom or special instruction or programming for a student or several students that really have high needs, whether that is a combination, we're seeing a lot of combinations of disability, mental health, many connecting things that we really aren't sure, like where the need is. So if you think about the RTI, the triangle, and you think about tier one, tier two, tier three, or MTSS, tier one, tier two, tier three, where are the tip, tip of the tier three, setting for, special education? So when I mentioned earlier that we thought we were serving the top one percent, and we're actually serving the top three percent, those students are coming to us from our member districts through the IP team process. So their case manager and team from the member district has identified that the student meets the criteria for setting for, and then refers them to nine sixteen for services. We say this is not the, the, the last stop. We provide our students with the skills and supports that they need to be successful and, and reach their goals and then return back to their home schools. That is our goal. And when we do an intake with families and students, we say this is just a stop for you, and we want you to have all that you need, the skill, develop the skills that you need to return to your home school, where your peers and your siblings are also.
Thank you for that. I think it's really helpful. I think one other question I had related to that was, you talked about the contracted services.
Yeah.
And this, you know, as Jessica said, this is a fantastic presentation, and especially having you here. So just curious, so you talked about those contract services, are those available only for students who are in that special education setting for process, or is that available to us, like for all of our students?
Yes, so here's how the contracted services thing works. So, so it's really hard to explain all the things that we do, because we're so different, and so it's just layered in complexity. But our process for making, making sure that you get what you need in terms of special teachers, specialized services, is we ask our member district directors of special education in January, February, to complete a, some predictions, like what do you think you're in need for services next fall? So they will fill out a contract with us to say, we have a student, or we have several students that need speech services, or we have several students that have visual impairments, or we have several students that have the need for a PhD teacher. And those are real low-incidence disability areas where it's hard to find, and you don't want to pay a full-time PhD teacher for a student that only needs a certain percentage of time on, that has a certain percentage of time on their IP. And so your director of special education, I think Sarah, filled out the paperwork and said, here is what we need for services from nine sixteen next year. We then know the staff that we need to hire, because all districts are sending us that information in January, February, we have a deadline to say, tell us, please, so we know who we need to hire for you for the next school year. So by, at this time, we know what the, what that looks like for our itinerant services or our contracted services for next fall. So we're able to know if we don't have that, our related services staff completely completed, and then we know who we need to go out and hire to get ready for fall to provide the services to you in your schools.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Oh, I was just going to mention, I, I love the consultation team. I know that, that, the definition of that particular team has, has seemed to have evolved and grown, and I'm really glad to see we're, we're actually using those services, because, because the, the assistance you give us with the assessment can hopefully curtail the out of, out of district placement, which is the big deal. And I like the, the collaboration for being able to bring the child back in, you know, because, you know, it, it can be a very abrupt, abrupt and traumatic experience to be able to make those transitions back successful, because that's what we want, we want success. A lot of these students have, have had trouble maintain, you know, getting to that point of success, and then to, to not have it pulled out from underneath them because it's abrupt. So I, I, I really look forward to seeing, you know, even how we can even involve that a little bit more to be able to, you know, keep our students here, you know, with their, with their friends and their families, and, and also keep the cost down, which would be really great, too.
Beautifully said, Laura, thank you. You said two really important points that, that I didn't even get to, is making sure the students stay in your schools. And that's what the consultation hopefully will do, is prevent the referral to nine sixteen.
Thank you very much for joining us.
Great, thank you. Thanks for the invite.
Next, we will have our presentation by our student school board representatives, Anusha and Caroline.
Why are we just going to? Chair Mueller, members of the board, superintendent Stanbik, we are here to provide a quick update on activities going around at Columbia Heights High School.
So I just read through this, right? Okay. So our mission at Columbia Heights Public Schools is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And the, our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. All right. So the first thing I'm going to be talking about briefly is the New York Studies Seminar. Some of the fine art students at our high school were given the opportunity to, it's echoing, oh, sorry. We're given the opportunity to take a road trip to New York. And we were there for five days and it was an amazing experience. I got to go there as well. We saw the MoMA, the Met, a couple Broadway shows, Guggenheim, Times Square, Chinatown. We visited in Art University in New Jersey and we saw like different types of art that they create there and we connected with some of the teachers. And we also went to an arts high school and that I thought was like one of my favorite parts of the entire trip because we actually got to connect with the students and we got to see everything that they were working on throughout their school, along with their studies and how everything worked there. And it was just crazy to see, like at the museums, the actual, like the actual original pieces of artwork that I've been learning about throughout my entire, you know, high school or just in general, since elementary school, like Pablo Picasso, Monet, Salvador Dali, like all those people. It was just crazy to actually see in person. So there's that. For all of you guys, Ramadan Barak. I'm Muslim and I just wanted to touch on this really quick. So I feel like one of, like the best part about Columbia Heights High School is, one, we're really diverse and second, we accommodate for our diversity. So one thing that I thought was really special that our high school did this year was during, so a bunch of our students fast, right? Because most of our population, well, I don't, I don't, I don't know about most, but a lot of our population is Muslim. So in the media center, something that we accommodated to is our congregational prayer, our midday prayer. So we like move all of the furniture, all the couches, everything, and we set down mats. And that is one thing that I feel like is very unique to our school. Nobody else that I've talked to has something like that. And also when, during lunchtime, students come there and they just hang out with their friends. And just for this month, no food and water, or water is allowed, but no food is allowed to, out of respect of the Muslim students that attend our high school.
We will be going to be having a student school board networking session with other student representatives from other schools around the state on April 21st. So like a week. And it's going to be hosted in this community room and it's going to be following a World Cafe style discussion with other students from around the state. And it's going to also include Earth Day themed activities and a visit to Blooming Heights. And now we're going to be covering some of the issues that we've noticed going on in the high school. The first one is the use of cell phones and social media being really rampant this year specifically in classrooms. So there's a lot of phone overuse in the classrooms. We understand phones are tools that can be used to assist with learning, but specifically students are using this as an excuse, being like, oh, I'm using my calculator, but the whole time they've just been texting in class. Or they're like, oh, I had to fact check something, but the whole time they've just been on their phone. And several teachers have been expressing annoyance with this interrupting lecture time and just disrupting students all around the classroom. And another problem I've noticed that has started becoming more popular is students will use, take the bathroom pass and be gone for 20 to 30 minutes at a time to be filming TikToks or taking photos with each other in the halls rather than using the restroom and going back to class. And we're currently working with Principal Nguyen to try to figure out how to stop this amount of cellphone use.
Okay. One other grow, or aspect that Caroline and I thought needed to be addressed is vaping use or e-cigarettes. This generally happens in the bathrooms a lot, actually, a lot more than you guys would think. And we, I just feel like as, as a school, we need this to end completely. Like it's, it makes me really sad because students aren't taking their education seriously. And usually the students that are vaping consistently are doing very poorly in their classes and just their overall attention span in general. And I just, again, we're working with Mr. Nguyen to find a solution to this problem. Oh, and okay, so future events that we want to talk to you guys about and invite you to is the CHS S Play, which is April 27th, 28th, and 29th, the Academic Award Ceremony, which is May 10th, band and choir concerts, May 11th, May 25th, and May 24th, Expressions Art Show, which you guys should all go to, is May 17th, which it expresses six through 12 art, and May 18th. And graduation is June 8th. So yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For presentation.
Great. Thank you both very much for your continued service on the board as well as this excellent presentation. And we're looking forward to hearing more about the Student Leadership Group coming. So that's really super exciting. Does anybody have any questions for our student school board representatives? Mary?
Not a question. I just want to call out, I love that you are looking holistically like what are the concerns that are happening? And I think I'm incredibly glad to hear that you are working with administration as the students to say, like, how can we address these concerns? Because I think a lot of times adults make, make rules and we make policies with really good intention and we don't have the level necessarily that you do to say, yeah, if we do this, like that's gonna work like this way. So I'm just really grateful for your continued input in those policies and, and I look forward to hearing more about that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Jessica?
Well, first, I'd just like to thank both of you for being here and sharing this information from your perspective. Some of us are not on the policy committee and are new to the board. So I was just wondering if maybe, since we have the, some of us haven't had the opportunity to meet you, if you could just maybe introduce yourself. And I personally would be really interested in learning just briefly kind of what interested you in, in serving as a student school board member.
Of course. My name is Anusha Lee. I am a senior at Columbia Heights High School. And what interested me to join the school board was making a difference, really. I think that our school already does an excellent job and I just wanted to know, you know, who is all behind that.
I'm Caroline Raleigh. I'm a junior and the reason I joined was mostly due to, when coming out of COVID, I wanted to see how this is going to affect our students and kind of be one of the leading forces of change to hopefully impact these students' lives that will have been affected.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Michelle?
I was just gonna say, I really respect you.
Thank you.
You are very thoughtful and intentional in your, your words and your actions. And I think it says a lot about you, you know, and what, and what you're doing. It, it takes a lot to do what you're doing. It is not easy all the time. And that says a lot. I see your passion. I see your excitement and I love it. So congratulations on what you're doing and keep going.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for doing what you're doing.
Thank you so much for listening, you guys.
Other questions?
Yeah, Julie. I just got a question. So I noticed that three of the things that you brought up were really addictive type situations.
Yes, cell phones.
What have you been talking about as solutions to those? I mean, obviously you're bringing that issue to the board.
Right.
But you're working with administration. What kind of ideas have been coming out to try to curb those issues?
I think mostly with cellphone use, it's kind of possibly rewriting our cellphone policy or expanding punishments associated with using cell phones in the classroom. And for like drug and especially vaping use, it's possibly gonna end up just having to be, having a staff or a, a, a appointed, someone who's appointed to monitor students' use and make sure kids are going in the bathroom and not being in there for 20, 30 minutes at a time to potentially be doing any addictive substances.
And one thing that we also talked about was students are, tend to listen more to their peers rather than adults or, you know, someone in authority, right? So if your friend tells you to stop, you're much more likely to stop. So that is one thing that we wanted to expand on. That's what Principal Nguyen was like, if I, if I tell them, you know, stop, they're not going to listen to me. So if we have like a group of students that are leaders, which we already do, going around, you know, spreading the message, I feel like that would be a much more effective way to end this or reduce it.
As a mother, I completely agree.
I, I think that's awesome. Thank you. Oh, I, I just, I, I'm so delighted. When we, when we were, you know, discussing having student school board members and stuff like that, we really wanted to, to give you the latitude to define your role the way that, that you thought was appropriate. So I really love to see your, your dedication to your, your fellow students in addition to your pride in the school and, you know, participating in the different policy discussions and things like that. So it's really exciting to see how you're defining this. We want you to have a really strong voice and what you do, which, you've got the, what you're doing is really, really vital for this district. It is incredibly vital because we can't, we don't know what it's like to be in, in the classroom. So we really need your insight into what we can do. It's, it's just, and it's, it's incredible. I mean, it really is. And thank you for, for stepping outside and with the organization of the, of the, getting the other school board, the other student school board members together. It's, it's really, really exciting. You know, you're, you're trailblazers, you know that? So, I mean, just think about how amazing things are going to be and you started it all.
Excellent. Great. Thank you, Laura. I just have one item. It's more for the board members. First of all, thank you for giving us the save the dates and inviting us to the activities. You would not have known this, but I know I saw boards writing down the band concert was moved from May 11th to May 18th. So, just so you, because as a band mom, I know this, but you would not have known in time for your presentation. That just happened today. So if, as you guys are writing those down. Great. Well, thank you both very much for coming and for your continued service.
You're both so beautiful.
Thank you. You are good to go. Thank you for coming. Next, we will have our levy update with Director Hennigans and Director Stenbik.
Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik. It's not showing up there. Let me see. We even practiced this. There we go. Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik. I'm here this evening with Director Hennigans on Zoom to give a levy presentation, a levy update. So our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. All of our core values for our district will be presented in this, in this evening's presentation. And of course, it's all predicated on the Columbia Heights School Board's equity statement. In terms of governance, as you're listening to this presentation, there are some governance questions that will be coming up. This is an information item this evening. And then there will be a discussion opportunity at the school board work session on May 16th. And then this will be, there will be an action item presented at the school board meeting for business on May 23rd.
Thank you, Director Stenbik. Chair Mueller, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenbik. The next few slides, I'm just gonna go over some things that we've seen before, but it just kind of sets the stage for the conversation. And this chart, this first chart that we're showing is where, where we sit with districts near the metro area the same size as our district and what revenue is received by the district from the community per pupil. So you can see Columbia Heights at 309 or it's actually 30893 and how we compare to some of the other districts that are our size and what they're receiving as revenue from the community through an operating levy. And you can see that the, the top right is the current per pupil cap in Minnesota, which is 2,11097. You know, obviously we're very far from that. The metro average is in the range of 1,100. So again, we're also very far from, from the metro average. And then this is just another slide that is comparing to some of the districts around us. They may not be the same size as us, but it's districts around us. And again, it's about comparison, a comparison of the resources that they're receiving, financial resources they're receiving per pupil. So that's that dollar amount per pupil from their community is, from a tax for our operating levy. And another important graph is just what we've been doing over the last few years, actually for, you know, close to a decade now of the cuts that we've made each year here in our district. You can see here over the last, since 2015, 16 school year, we've made 7.3 million in cuts. And, you know, a lot of this, in some sense, some of the years has to do with declining enrollment or a combination of declining enrollment and increased costs. Obviously, we see those costs go up, inflation goes up each year. And so it's been a challenge for us in this district to continue to look for cuts every year as we move forward. This is what our fund balance looks like in that conversation. So even though that we're making significant cuts each year, we still have a fund balance. Again, this was really more directly related to COVID and that decline in enrollment and then that inflationary increase in costs. And then just trying to keep, keep our programming for our students. And then the summary basically of that is, you know, we know that the Minnesota Legislature is in session right now and there's a lot of conversation about what's happening and what we're, what kind of increase in revenue districts will see, receive in a per pupil. Typically, we receive about a 2% increase. And obviously you can see by the previous charts, the 2% increase is really insufficient, not sufficient, and causes our district to make cuts each and every year. That special education cross subsidy and EL cross subsidy has increased dramatically for our district and others. Transportation costs are really skyrocketing for us and others across the state. And at one time, federal COVID dollars are going away. And so we, we definitely, from a resource standpoint for our students, we have a big gap. And again, we're sitting compared to our other districts around us and that are our size significantly lower in what we're receiving for resources for our students from, directly from the tax base of the community.
So we wanted to provide information about the timeline that's forthcoming. So on April 19th, this, this coming April, there's the launch of the community survey. So the Morris Leatherman Market Research Company is the one doing the survey. 350 surveys will be targeted to reflect the population of this community. Surveys will be done both in English and Spanish, and the cost of the survey is included in our nine 16 member. included in our nine sixteen membership. On May sixteenth, then, the survey results will be presented at a work session. On May twenty-third, then, the school board will vote to decide, one, whether to go out for a levy, the amount that would be requested in the levy, and the specific ballot question. If the board decides to vote for the operational levy, then the following day, on May twenty-fourth, an informational webpage will go up on our website that will be made public so that the public will have access to the information. On May twenty-sixth is the last date for notification to MDE. August twenty-fifth is the last date for notification to Anoka County. From June into November, the district and community will have informational presentations and communications. And then on November seventh, that will be the special election, both for the open school board seat for Columbia Heights Public Schools and also for that operational levy if you choose to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hennigens and Director Stunkel. Laura, question?
Um, yes, um, a- as far as the uh the potential question, um, does that have to be submitted and accepted by May twenty-sixth, or does it just have to be submitted for an intent?
Uh, it just has to be submitted.
Okay. Thanks.
And we're working with a consulting company, Baker Tilly, that we've worked with in the past. And uh they they help provide the data that we need um for like average home values and and potential impacts. Um, so they help provide that data and specifically making sure that we're submitting the correct information.
Thank you.
Mary?
One question that I've had from community members over the past few weeks is, um, how does the impact of whatever the state decides for their budget, how does that impact or does it impact this timeline?
Well, one thing is that we do have that deadline with MDE, which falls around the same time that the state legislature is making decisions. So that's certainly something that we have to factor in. I'm not sure if Superintendent Stenvik would want to say anything beyond that.
It's a tricky time. It's a very tricky timeline, and I know um I've been in meetings with state legislatures through AMSD, and um many superintendents in school, district leaders have asked if they could, you know, if the if the state legislature could make some financial, educational financial decisions earlier because they know that we are planning for next year. Um, and so it just, it doesn't seem, I'm not hearing anything that they're going to announce anything earlier than the end, the very end of May.
And that was what I think, you know, we had talked about before. Um, I think just wanted to sort of get that question out there so that um we could address those concerns that community has. Because essentially, our timeline may match up, it sounds like, and it might not, but probably it won't. And so we just need to proceed as if it's not going to, right?
Well, let, can I?
Yeah.
One um, one important aspect is that the board will have data from the community, and hopefully that helps to make the decision.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I I just have one more uh one more thing, um, just for uh clarification. When was the last time we increased the the levy? I'm I'm thinking it's been like fifteen years, eighteen years? And how many more years are left on this levy?
Uh, there are three more years left on this levy. Um, I have well, two after this year. Um, and it's been since two thousand five.
Two thousand and five.
So paid two thousand and six was when uh this first hit the books.
So we've been collecting three hundred and eight dollars and change per pupil since two thousand and five, and it hasn't changed since then.
Correct.
But our costs have significantly risen. Got it? Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, absolutely.
Um, why does that take so long? I mean, why does a levy end up being for ten years? I don't I don't quite understand.
I can answer that. I've got a little bit of history with that. Um, when uh we were having discussions about the the about the levy, when it was coming to expire the last time around, uh, we were actually currently just starting the first stages of the recession. Um, so there was a lot of um, there was a lot of um, there were a lot of foreclosures in this area. Um, so this this particular community was hit really hard. And so what we decided, what we decided we were gonna do um for the benefit of the community was to just basically not ask for any more and just try to make the cuts that we needed so that it didn't put additional strain on the community. So we just asked, we basically just asked to renew it.
And I think Julie too, for your question of why ten years, um, too, it that's kind of a board decision in terms of whether it's five years or ten years. And I think there's some um sensitivities to voters and having some predictability of expenses so that they know, you know, over the next ten years, here's what this funding is gonna be, or here's what's gonna happen in my taxes. Um, if you go out too often, it's challenging, I think, for people to be planning on that. So lots of factors that come in, but the the amount of money, the 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 number of years for that levy is all determined by the board at the time.
Thank you.
Great, great questions. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much for your time today. We'll look forward to those results of the survey. Next, we'll move on to action items. Um, our first action item is the termination of probationary teachers' contract resolution with Director Bennett.
Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. Tonight, the board will be asked to adopt a resolution to non-renew and terminate employment contracts that are listed there. And this is the first of two resolutions, so we've backed up our staffing process um in the last couple of years. And this resolution includes um teachers who are not tenured, who are cut for um either being a long-term sub, not enough days in the school year that they worked, a tier-one or a tier-two licensure um that expires in June, or if they were on an Otterfield placement that also expires in June. And also includes staff um non-renewed for performance. So tonight, I'm here seeking approval of this resolution.
Great. Thank you, Director Bennett. Um, I'm going to read this resolution and then ask for a motion a second to move it forward. Dawn, just real quick, do I read the dear Mr. and Mrs. part of this? Okay. Okay. Um, resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contracts of probationary te- teachers. Whereas the following persons are probationary teachers in Independent School District Number Thirteen, and they are listed below. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number Thirteen that pursuant to Minnesota Statute one twenty-two A dot four zero subdivision five, the teaching contracts of those persons listed on page two of this resolution, probationary tier teachers in Independent School District Number Thirteen are hereby terminated and not renewed for the close of the of the current, at the close of the current twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Be it further resolved that written notice be sent to said teachers regarding termination and non-renewal of his or her contract as provided by law, and that said notice shall be in the substantial following form, which is um printed on there as well. Um, can I get a motion to move this forward?
So moved.
Laura, and is there a second?
Second.
Second. Second by Jessica. Any discussion? Laura?
Um, this is always one of those tough ones, um, that it is our responsibility for um to um, we have directed the um the superintendent and staff to be able to review all of the staff. We passed that in February, I believe, is when we we passed that resolution um to look for efficiencies. Needless to say, you know, some students are long-term, I mean, some teachers are long-term substitution, you know, substitutes, you know, so needless, we're, you know, we would, you know, um, terminate that contract and sign a new one if that all goes well. So this isn't always um, it's it's always, it's always difficult um and with funding issues. Um, I'm glad that we're, we found a two-step process that seems to be more palatable to the staff, you know, um, because um finding out at the last minute is always um not good. And so I like that they get the notification early, and that was the question I was gonna ask. All of these, these individuals have been notified.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think to just piggyback on what Laura said, for our new board members, in this resolution here, these are our probationary teachers, and these are teachers that we are required to terminate for the most part. For the most part, these are probationary teachers, which are either licensing expirations or they haven't worked the required number of days, like it's it's a requirement um for this piece for for the majority. Any other questions?
Well, and when you say for the majority, there are also teachers included in this list who would be terminated for performance.
That's right. That's correct.
I mean, I, if I may. Laura, I think, I mean, all of your points are are well-taken, and I I I share that sentiment. I think this is a really difficult um resolution to, you know, discuss and act on. I also really, you know, having, having, you know, watched the board over a number of years and seen the shift in how this process um is done, I I think that as difficult it is, it is done thoughtfully, and now with this two-step process, um, allows folks to really, um, you know, make decisions of kind of what's next um across the district. So um, not, not a fun resolution to vote on, certainly, but I appreciate the the change in the process to really um humanize this as much as possible.
Thank you, Jessica. Any other questions? All right, we'll proceed to vote. Mary, since this is a resolution, will you call the roll, please?
Yep.
Palmer?
Aye.
Hul?
Aye.
Petway?
Aye.
Maderas?
Aye.
Granland?
Aye.
Mueller? Aye. Resolution passes. Thank you, Director Bennett. It is our um evening of resolutions. Um, next up, we have a resolution. Um, this was something that we discussed at um our la- our work session and then our last meeting um about whether or not um to um do away with having a primary elections. Um, so we do have a resolution um that would be eliminating eliminating primaries. Um, this is a resolution, the template that was provided by the county, um, that other districts have used in um eliminating their primaries. Um, so I'll go ahead and read this and then ask for a motion a second to move this forward. Um, resolution reaffirming the general election schedule for school board members and eliminating primaries as the method of nomination. Whereas pursuant to Minnesota Statute two zero five A dot zero four, the School Board of Columbia Heights Independent School District Number Thirteen has resolved to hold general elections for the school board member on the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November in all even number years. And whereas Minnesota Statute two zero eight dot zero three states the school board of a school district may, by resolution adopted by April fifteenth of any year, decide whether to choose nominees for the school board by a primary. And whereas the school board does not believe it is in the best interest of the district to continue to hold primary elections as part of the nomination process. Now therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Columbia Heights Independent School District Number Thirteen that nominees for a school board shall not be determined in a primary election, and instead candidates who submit an affidavit candidacy for the office of school board member shall proceed directly to the regular scheduled general election held in November of each even numbered year. Be it further resolved that this resolution upon adoption shall be effective for all ensuing elections of school board members in the school district until it is revoked. I need a motion to move this forward. So moved? Mary? And a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle. And discussion? It's a lot. Julie?
I just wanna make one comment is that when you revoke something, it's harder to put it back. And so I appreciate the next resolution. I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you. Yeah, I know for people that are watching, this again was a very long conversation um at our last meeting as well, um, that we wanted to have on camera. So definitely not something this board is is taking lightly. Jessica?
Say, you know, we did have pretty robust discussion about this. I think um reasonable people can disagree or hold numerous opinions all at once about what the impact of holding or not holding primary elections are. Um, I think as part of that discussion, many of us expressed um a a real um concern for making sure that our community um is enfranchised in the the um candidacy process, also the the throughout the campaigns and making sure that our voters um really understand, you know, who's running and making sure that, you know, folks who are elected um are elected, you know, by our community who um has 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 an understanding and are informed. So um, we we talked about that at great length. Um, as as member Hul mentioned, we'll be discussing another resolution after this that um will require our board to take future action, um, but in thinking about the financial considerations around um uh paying for a a primary in a special election year specifically, when we look at um many of the most of the discussion we just had about our financial situation, um, I I I'm in support of the that resolution.
Excellent summary. Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, this is a resolution, so we will do the roll call vote. Mary? Palmer?
Aye.
Hul?
Aye.
Petway?
Aye.
Maderas?
Aye.
Granland?
Aye.
Mueller? Aye. Resolution passes. Next is another resolution. You guys just get to hear me read today. So this, as a member Maderas has said, um, is based on our um conversation, our very lengthy and robust, as you said, conversation regarding um the um, the importance of primary elections in the voting process um at on non-special elections time. And because of the statute statutory requirements that one at once we absolve primaries, they are absolved for all elections, and so um until it is put back in place. So I will read this resolution and then ask for a motion a second to move that forward. Resolution regarding school district primary election system relating to special elections. Whereas Minnesota Statute two zero five A dot zero three states that the school board of a school district by resolution adopted by April fifteenth of any year decide whether to choose nominees for school board primary. And whereas the School Board of Columbia Heights Independent School District Number Thirteen Board has an obligation to govern the district with a commitment to fiscal responsibility. And whereas there are no other elections taking place in November twenty twenty twenty-three, which would result in a primary election that would allocate part of the cost of the special election to other parties. And whereas the board passed a resolution on April eleventh, twenty twenty-three to eliminate elections for the November twenty twenty-three, excuse me, to eliminate primary elections for the November twenty twenty-three election, which is a special election for one vacant seat. And whereas the board passed a resolution on eliminating primaries in accordance with the state statute, which eliminates primaries for all ensuing elections of board members in that school district until a resolution requiring primaries is passed. And whereas the board carefully considered the resolution to eliminate primaries and agreed that the primary elections for non-special elections were important part of the elections process. Now therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number Thirteen, State of Minnesota, as follows. Um, one, following the November twenty twenty-three special election and before April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, the board is committed to acting on a resolution reinstating primary resolutions for all ensuing elections of board members. Two, the board will continue to assess primary elections for special elections on an as-needed basis to best govern the distance with district with a commitment to fiscal responsibility. Three, should primary elections be reinstated, the school district primary elections shall be conducted pursuant to Minnesota Statute section two zero five A dot zero three as amended and the Minnesota election laws generally. The school district clerk is authorized to direct, is authorized and directed to take actions, such actions as necessary to be prepared to conduct primary elections. I get a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Julie? And a second?
Second.
Second by Jessica. And discussion? Michelle?
I just think it was very, very well um said. I think it said everything that we were thinking. I just think it's perfect. Seriously. I love it.
Thank you. Other discussion?
I I would just like to just add one other thing. I think one of the, one of my primary um. I think one of the, one of my primary, one of my primary concerns was is that there may come an opportunity where participating in the primary process, but we, we can't, we really, we're just not big enough to be able to handle the full burden. And it can be, it can be, I mean, you know, to be able to serve the community, you know. I mean, if there is other things going on, people are more involved and paying attention, you know. And as far as I know, I think we're only like one of six districts in the state that was even holding primaries.
One of eight and
One of eight, okay.
No other districts in Anoka County.
Yeah, one of eight in the entire state, you know. So that made us pretty special, but I think we're pretty special all the time. So.
Thank you. Jessica?
I would just echo a member Petway's, kudos for putting together a resolution when we, I feel like our discussion left you with a very tricky window through which to, to write the language. So excellent job with that. And I, I'm in support of this resolution because I think it lays out a consensus of intent to reconsider the importance of, of holding primaries in, in, in general election years. I know it does, it doesn't commit us to that, it commits us to considering that as a board. But hopefully that will allow for a little more predictability to amongst our, our community about when elections or when primaries would be, would be held.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mary?
I would just, you know, also echo all of that. And I think especially now as we just had that conversation about the levy and where we're at in providing for our school district. I think that, you know, being, if, this is not just, like, we say we're fiscally responsible, right? And we do all the things and we are fiscally responsible. This is actually where the rubber meets the road. We are saying this is how we're being fiscally responsible in this way. And also, we, our expectation as a board, as it exists now is that we will continue to address that and look at that. This is not a forever thing. And I think that is really important, I think, to our community and all of the people that we serve in this capacity. And also I think it just provides the most amount of accountability and accessibility to our community. Because, you know, the, there's not always a fantastic, robust response to off-year elections. And that, I think, is also another big disservice to our community at times. And I think this is really just like the best of both worlds. So I'm very glad that we have this. So thank you so much for writing that, Chair Mueller.
I would actually like to say one other thing. I was thinking about one other, one other thing too. This is also one of those unexpected expenses that you can't budget for. So, and, and as it is, you'd be, we'd be looking at a replacement and then throwing an election into things. It, it just, it, it just doesn't. It's not really the best use of our, of our funds, you know, not, at least not for special elections. You know, I mean, when everybody's thinking about in being involved in the process, then we can certainly participate because we don't have to bear the whole cost.
Thank you, Laura. Any other discussion? Julie?
Will this go on the calendar then for next year? So that we make sure by April fifteenth that we've got this up in front of the board?
Yeah, I've already asked Dawn if this passes to put something on our calendar for January.
Should we do that with the, with our, our board organizational meeting? Add that as a?
I don't know that we would
Wait until the last minute?
We should probably not do this, do a resolution at the organizational meeting, but maybe at the first regular meeting.
Okay, okay. It'd be part of our routine.
Yep. Any other discussion? Thank you all for your input on all of this and for the, I keep using Jessica's word, for the robust discussion. I mean, I, this was a lot and I really appreciate the conversation that we had about this. Mary, will you call the roll, please?
I would love to. Palmer?
Aye.
Hool?
Aye.
Petway?
Aye.
Maderas?
Aye.
Granland?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye. Resolution passes. Thank you all.
Next is board topics. Anybody have any board topics? Julie?
Unlike waving.
Yeah, I was looking at both of them.
One of the topics I want to bring up is in Rochester, I believe, they had a cybersecurity issue. And I'd like to understand a little bit more about our process of ensuring our firewalls are strong. You know, what, what kind of security we have on our data? Because of course, any student private information, any employee private information that gets out is really critical to, what, do we have an inform, information? You know, do we send out, you know how like TCF, they got, you know, hacked? How do we handle that? And so I'd like to?
Is that something that could be in an update? You can get the information. I know that's hard to answer right now at the board table. I'm prepared. But if we could provide, get more information. Thank you. Excellent question. Jessica?
That was actually one of my, my two board topics that I was going to raise, like from an enterprise, like a risk management perspective, kind of where that is, because Rochester following on the heels of similar tech in Minneapolis. So thank you for bringing that up. That's great. My, my other board topic is just related to the upcoming retirement celebration on May third. I did see a flyer for the event up at one of our schools, which is great, and I am excited to attend. And I'm just wondering if board members are planning to attend that, if we should register for that event individually? Or is that something we should do through the board? So maybe if someone could give us some information offline about that, that'd be great.
What is it?
The retirement celebration.
End of the retirement celebration.
You'll love the bells.
Yes, this, this is something that I would highly encourage, if you are at all possible, all board members to attend. It's a great celebration of a lot of amazing careers. And then we would register with you, Dawn.
I will bring some tickets to one of our next meetings. Thirty dollars each.
I brought my money with me today.
We can help you or you can stop by anytime from front desk here. You can help to get a ticket there or you can email me when you make your arrangements.
Great. Thank you.
We can set a table aside for the school.
And what date was that?
May third.
May third.
More information, maybe?
That'd be really great.
First Wednesday in May. We didn't put the flyer in, but there is a Perfect. Thank you. It's one of the fun things we get to do.
It's going to be over at?
Michelle?
Really quickly, I'm not sure if anyone else is having problems with it, but I've been getting a lot of calls from the district number. And none of them are really for me. They're all either, sorry. They're not really, there's either no one there or it's a wrong number, no one ever leaves a voicemail. But I'm getting them more frequently, so I was wondering if anyone else was having this issue or not. And the only reason, that was crazy because I was like, okay, yeah, I have to say something now tonight. Because it was just random every now and then. And now it's like, at least twice a day, maybe three times even. To where it's like, okay, why is no one there? Or it'll be just someone, oh, sorry, I have the wrong number, type of thing.
I'll follow up.
Okay.
I'll follow up.
Thank you. I haven't had any random calls, but yeah. Not random ones, no? I've got two items. One is that our community engagement Zoom session on April twenty-fifth. I don't believe we have people signed up for that yet, unless I'm mistaken. So that's at five forty-five PM. We have two board members who would be on Zoom. We can send an agenda, basically going through, it's like walking through kind of each of the schools, letting the community members share, talk, ask questions over Zoom. So wondering if anybody would be interested. Laura and I did the last one, which unfortunately no one attended. So hopefully more people will attend this one. But is there anybody who's interested in doing these Zoom?
I'd be happy to do.
Actually, I have a question with that. I guess I'm a little bit afraid because I feel like someone will ask a question, I won't know the answer and I don't want anyone to have to hold my hand, right? So like, what's the?
Yeah, and, and I will say, for the two who do sign up, I can share with you some informa, because I, yes, I can share with two people. Information, so I can share how to facilitate.
For sure. I'd be, I'd be up for it.
Yep. Michelle?
Yeah.
Okay. Jessica and Michelle. Perfect. We'll get information out to you. And then I have one other ask. I am the representative for the Metro EXU, which has one meeting a year. And unfortunately, I am not able to attend the meeting this year. My daughter is actually doing a college visit that day and I need to go to that. So it is April nineteenth at three thirty PM. Are they still located like at the Bethel campus? And it's from like three thirty to five thirty and there's refreshments. And you get to learn a lot about the, about Metro EXU, what they, almost like what we just had from nine sixteen is, is there. So I was wondering if anybody would be able to go for me. And you don't have to answer now, but think about it and let me know. I would appreciate it.
It is a really cool meeting. I won't be able to do it though.
So I, I, when I, I really learned a lot when I went.
It is a really cool meeting.
And if, worst case scenario, Superintendent Stenbik is attending as a board member. So she will be there as well. But if anybody would like to go, let me know. Any other board topics? All right, I will adjourn our meeting at eight forty-eight.